Meeting called. All matter clerk, please call the row.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augusti, Councilman Questa, Councilman Grover, Councilman Tura, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilman Keenan, Councilman Selenio, Councilman Maza, President Paul.
Here, six member, President Matter Clerk. This is the reg conference of the city council as incorporated in the end of meeting notice of 2013, which will file in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2012, and sent to the Star Legend Home News Tribune in compliance with the provision of the open public mean law of New Jersey. At this time, public speaker, any taxpayer, resident or taxpayer, like address city council, in a matter please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Michelle Nelson.
Stand up ma'am, stand in the corner down there, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Nelson.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can go ahead?
Yes.
Okay. Amanda, pass your money to 32. Yes.
Hey guys.
That's my, 232 Farmery Place.
Home place, okay.
Yes, Elmore. I am the CEO and founder of House of Walker Publishing, and for a year now, I have embarked on the initiative of outdoor, solar powered, mobile device charging kiosk. And I'm sure many of you have heard of it by now. Don Travassano advised me considering you all a package.
Yes.
With all of the approvals from the police department, the fire department, and a couple of other departments where I needed approval, this is a kiosk. I am here tonight respectfully requesting your approval to put this on the streets of Elizabeth, New Jersey.
We have our package, ma'am, yes. Yes, right here.
This initiative started about a year ago. I had stepped into the mayor's Monday night meetings, and it was just an idea, and I proposed it to him. I was asking if he knew anyone here in the whole city hall who could help me with this. And he said, "I like that." He said, "Go tell Don Travassano I said, you know, to work with you." So that's how it all started. And for the entire year, I have sacrificed everything. I got a manufacturer in America, it was very important to me that it was made in America, and they currently make electrical kiosks, charging devices. And when I brought the idea to them, they didn't even know if they can do a solar powered, completely 100% solar powered. But I, we decided that they would try. So I raised the money I needed to raise, and it took about six months to complete it. So all of the testing was done. Here, this for advertising, it's free service to the community. Anybody walking down the street, you run out of juice with your laptop, cellphone, iPad, iPod, you just stop, plug up for free, and it's completely solar powered. The thing I love most about it is simplicity. It is just a solar powered mobile device charging kiosk, something that we all need. I've been stuck in the street many times with no charging capability. You have to run into a store, they put you out, you go to the library, you go to the coffee shop, nobody likes that. So this is free to consumers, free to everyone. And I respectfully requesting your approval.
What we would do, Ms. Nelson, and you have any contact number or something we can get back to you?
Oh, yes, I do, I have a business card, I believe.
Will you leave that here with us?
Okay. Is it any questions, anybody want to know anything about it?
I have a business card.
You have a business card, okay.
All of your information should be there, but I also have more business cards than I can.
Yeah, you have a few questions.
Oh, and Maza, I've spoken to, Councilman Keenan, helped me along, thank you so much for that.
Good, Councilman Maza, chance to see Councilman Grover.
Mr. President, as Ms. Nelson, as she mentioned, this particular information's been before us over a year. And of course, I liked the idea and I recommend it, but apparently, the chair that was sitting there last year or whatever, felt like to send it to the various directors, so each one they should give an input, whether the legality, the police department, corporate works, this and that. Now finally, you tell me that you went to see the mayor, the mayor says...
No, I went to see the mayor before any of this happened. It was just an idea. And he said, "I love that. Tell Don Travassano I said to work with you." I left out a couple of important things. I have a million dollar policy, so Elizabeth will be held harmless. Richard Dunn, he is a very prominent businessman in Elizabeth, and he has over 60 establishments. Well, Donald advised that I reach out to meet the business community. He gave me his number, I called him, I said, "Look, I'm trying to put this in front of Payless, it's one of your stores, and I don't want you to see it and wonder what it is." So he said, "Well, send me the information." I sent him the information. He wrote me back and says he supported 1000% of anything I need, that I can reach out to him. And again, yes, I did get the approval from the police and the firemen and a few other departments that required.
Certainly, Ms. Nelson will look into it.
Mr. President, my item finish because...
I'm sorry.
...there were multiple facts. I think she's presenting something that is good, and it's worthwhile for a taxpayer, it's paid actually by the people they're advertising. And my only concern that I had probably was, if they do advertise, the people that do advertise, that they're going to be probably published alongside a lot of graphic that you have there?
Yes.
And the only concern I have is when we have graffiti, who's going to be able to clean it up? Because people, when they go there to charge or whatever, while they're waiting for the bus or the train or, you know, you're going to be able to...
But two things, we have a maintenance plan, so we will handle maintenance, and also, we wanted to hire a security guard to sit with the kiosk. So somebody will job. And if you want more, then there'll be more jobs. But, yes, so we're handling maintenance, security, and...
Mr. President, especially she wants to put this particular in a six ward, in which are the councilman and SID Midtown at Elizabeth, which is a great thing, not only the student that will attend Union County College or the other, the other college that is on the Ursh Towers, whatever name it is, I just forgot, and people that are using Beck and Forte New York on a train station, is something that is good, you know, the sooner the better. In our next year, the 350th birthday of our city, we'd like to welcome all those great things that, at least, we go for a trial, at least over a year, and if it doesn't work, we're going to say thank you and goodbye.
Absolutely, I have no problem moving it if you don't like it. I appreciate that, Councilman Maza, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Grover?
You know?
You're done? Councilman Grover?
Thank you, Mr. President. My only concern is that this doesn't become another payphone headache that we've had in our town, and still have in our town, which is, we have all these payphone boxes on our sidewalks, and we have no legal way to get rid of them, because they don't belong to us. And my concern really is, that being the case, are you, I think it doesn't say it in here, but are you going to bond, put up a bond for this?
If you call for a bond, we certainly will.
I think that would be a good idea, because what happens is, let's say, and I have lights that light up my walkway that are solar panel, and after a few months, they stop working, because the solar panel just doesn't charge up enough. So at some point, there's going to have to be some modifications, maintenance, if it then goes kaput, then everybody moves to...
Okay. We are totally 100%...
It's a 300 pound piece of equipment.
Actually, it's 200, I'm sorry, that's a misquote. We are totally 100% responsible for the kiosk. If you say move it, we move it. When you say move it, we move it. Now, as for the solar panel, the battery is lithium ion, some kind of miraculous battery, so there is a battery, and the solar panel powers the battery.
Right.
So like on rainy days like today, the kiosk would still work, because the battery would have enough power to sustain the system.
Is there, do we have an ordinance that's going to deal with these things?
We do not have an ordinance.
It's new, it's innovative, it's something...
No, I, listen, I love the idea, I just want to be protected.
I understand that, I understand that.
Because if we call you, and for some reason, nobody comes to remove it, we should have the power as a city to move it ourselves.
Absolutely, but that will not happen.
And that's something I think we should, our law department should really put something together to, to just protect us. We had this problem with this payphones. We created these ordinances, we can't even locate the owners of the payphones, it's a mess.
Okay, well, because this is a new initiative, and because I struggled so hard to get them, the finances to make it happen, this piece here was 13/5, but it's freestanding, because this is what I wanted. However, this box, this really is the, this is where the battery is located.
Right, the brain.
And this solar panel, I can put this box on a bus shelter, and put this on top of the bus shelter. So the pole is something I wanted as a freestanding unit the first time. No, I'm just saying, I'm just asking.
Again, I'm not so concerned about the item. My concern is, what happens when we need to get rid of this stuff?
You tell us to move it, and we move it.
That's what you just said.
Yes.
What if you don't move it?
You put that, if you put it in writing, we have to move it.
We need to do something.
If there's an agreement, I mean, you can force the agreement.
What's the cure for the violation of the agreement?
Whatever you decide the cure is.
Well, it could be monetary damages, or be an injunction to remove the...
I think we give them notice, and if they don't move it in 21 days, then our guys go in and move it ourselves, or 14 days.
That can be part of the agreement, before or after.
And again, because we spent so much money on it, I'm sure, we will move it.
I think, wait a minute, I got to entertain the Councilman, Councilman Grover, you done? I got to, Councilman Gonzalez, I'm done. Councilman Gonzalez, then Councilman Keenan, come back here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with my colleague, Councilman Grover, that we should be able to remove it if we find that there are any problems with it in the future. I just want to say that last year, when this came before us, I was the president, and it was new, and it was something innovative, we didn't know enough about it.
Yes.
And as a result, that's why we asked for our different departments, the law department, everybody to take a look at it.
Yes.
To see if this was something that would be in the best interest of the residents here in the City of Elizabeth. I'm glad to see that they've looked it all over. Unfortunately, some have had an opportunity to have some discussion with you. This is the first I see it since that time, so unfortunately, I haven't had that opportunity. But there is something in here that is recommended by Sir Travassano in terms of any conditions or anything that we need to do, that this would be the time to do it, to include it here, and that there are some recommendations, and there were some concerns, that apparently you addressed with our different departments, so I'm hoping that once I get a chance to look through that, that, you know, I'm satisfied with it. But it seems like a good project. I don't see, why wouldn't it be something that the residents, especially given this day and age?
Right.
The use of different electronic equipment?
Everybody has something.
Why wouldn't it be a good thing?
And it's free.
So I'm hopeful that, you know, it's something that we can move forward, if, like Councilman Six would said, on a trial basis at least, or something like that. It seems like a good project, so we just need to make sure it has everything that we wanted before we move forward.
Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, I see that you responded to Mr. Loomis's...
Is that engineer?
Yeah.
They were the only ones who had some concerns, and I understand that.
Did they, you wrote him a letter?
Yes.
Has he responded to you?
Only with Don has, in the package, he didn't give me a response, because I think ultimately, they said that it was up to the city.
Yeah.
But I did respond to a little bit.
I would be very supportive of the six ward councilman's support for this, with the proviso that the law department carefully review the ordinance society by Mr. Loomis, so that you potentially draft an ordinance force that will...
Are we entering into a contract, or are we drafting an ordinance? Because they're two totally different things.
Well, are we limited, if we enter into a contract, then she has, then Ms. Nelson has exclusive right to do this. We draft an ordinance, any vendor could come in, and as long as they're under that...
Yes, and it's up to you guys to decide which it is that you want to do. I mean, it's your pleasure at this point, it's in your work.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I can suggest that the law department take these documents under review and advise us...
I'm going to give my suggestion, go ahead.
I'm sorry, sir.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
That's it.
No, 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 keep going, keep going.
That's my only point, that's my only point.
Yeah, exactly.
I have no problem at all with the project itself, but we need to do what's right in the interest of protecting legal...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anyway, Councilor Torres, I, sis, no one, you didn't raise your hand, but you want to entertain anything at all?
No, this is, this is truly something new, and I definitely would support this. Again, we just need to know exactly what our options are, you know, like our, as we said, removing, removing it, it needs to be removed, and we're going to be trying to...
All the, all the guys touch good, make good points.
And if you like, then you can say, Michelle, you can have too, I'm sorry.
All of you guys made good points, and my, Councilman Keenan kind of took the words out of my mouth, and I was saying, "That's all right, you know, let the law department kind of review all this, and then we can decide later on, George, whether we undo it." Two phases, one ordinance or a resolution, and after Councilman Grove took based on that, too, and I think we'll, once we get, when we review this, certainly, I'll let you know that.
Yes, okay.
I like that idea.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I'll assure you, we will get back to you. That's why I asked for your card, but I think you said you left the card.
Yes, but I do have one.
And I want to give you one person's name.
I will, thank you.
And I assure you, we will get back to you as rapidly as we possibly can. Although, remind you now, we're rapidly coming into July, where we only meet like twice a month.
Yes.
So don't think that we ignore you, because we get into the recess of time, so, but we will get back to you.
Okay, one last thing, the ordinances that are documented there from yesterday, of course, because nothing like this has existed.
Right.
So that's why I answered the way I answered, I don't think you have an ordinance or something, but I certainly appreciate all the comments and your support, thank you so very much.
Give me, let me have your card.
I will, thank you.
Yeah, she give me her card. Yeah, okay. Yeah, George, real quick.
George, if you look, the law department actually created an ordinance dealing with these payphones. You want to look at that, there's some very good language in there, it puts some details to it.
All right. Like the rest of the recognized councilwoman, the large councilwoman, Perkins-Augusti.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I wonder, my name is Robert Turner from the city. I wonder, with Reverend, Reverend Selenio's success in the primary election, I wonder, when he's going to run for president, and also, how much do I have to give to every Panhammer? As much as they want, or as much as I can afford?
What did you conclude?
Could be nothing.
Could be nothing. Your choice. Any, any other resident or tax feel like the city council, in a matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Christina Jeter, 223 Pond Street, apartment 2.
Say your name.
Christina Jeter, you want me to spell my last name? J-E-A-T-T-E-R, 223 Pond Street, apartment 2, Elizabeth, New Jersey, 07206. I just wanted to invite everyone to my homeless event I'm having on July 27, from 12 to 3.
27?
544 Elizabeth Avenue.
By what?
44.
Okay.
Elizabeth Avenue. And I also wanted to let you know, I got rid of one problem, and now I have another one. I don't know what it is with the city and me, but the food inspector came to my business the day I was feeding, and was harassing me, because I didn't have a sink. But I cook all the food right in front of the people. It's not like I'm making food from my house and I'm bringing it. I cook it right in front of the people that I give to the homeless people in the community. And last Wednesday, we fed 250 homeless people. So I don't know if like somebody out to get me, or nobody wanted to see me succeed. I mean, I don't get it. I don't bother anyone.
Everyone...
I'm trying to comply.
Any food establishment...
I just want to help, help the less fortunate.
Do they have sinks outside?
We didn't have a sink outside, but we have a sink inside, that the homeless people have access to my steps, and they can go upstairs in the bathroom and use the sink, if maybe, and we had a hose, so if we needed to wash anything, we could just run the hose and wash it. But everything that I use, every time I feed, I throw away. It's all disposable, so it's nothing where, we kept, we kept the deep fryer, because we made fried chicken. So I kept my deep fryer, but because I washed it in my house and brought it to my office and was a problem. And when the guy was there, which his name is Mark, he said everything was fine, but it's like the minute they get back here, it's a whole nother story. And I don't understand that. Like, why? Why, why are you bothering me for, I've been feeding for three months, this wasn't my first feed. I never had a problem before, so why is there a problem now? I don't get it.
We've got to look into it.
But still know, I am going to move forward with my fight against homeless events.
What time is this one?
It's from 12 to 3.
12, 3.
Right, and everything is free, I'm having snow cone, cotton candy machine, popcorn machine, it's going to be every type of food anybody can imagine.
Microchines.
Yeah, we're going to have, it's going to be a whole ton of food. I'm having the, my community health clinic is coming out, they're going to do bloods, blood pressure checks, diabetes screening. I'm having the New York City relief is coming out, they're going to be able to take homeless people that's addicted to drugs from my event, straight to a rehab. So, you know, it's about giving back and making our community better for everyone.
Ma'am, what's the address again?
544 Elizabeth Avenue. By the...
The school.
By the school.
Right, I'm right across the street from...
For your, in a six ward.
That's a six ward.
That's a six ward? Oh, I don't, they told me that was...
You're my ward.
On this side of the street, Banana King is my ward.
Oh, I'm right directly across from Banana King.
Yeah, my ward, no problem.
Oh, I'm in your ward.
I'll check, yeah. I'll check it out for you.
All right.
Okay. That was it. Oh, and me and Mr. Gorman, these schools, no issues.
I was going to say, but I usually don't interrupt you, but since you mentioned that, I'll let everybody know that you called me, you and I had a conversation after your deal, and I'm not going to get upset with people, because I know what I am, what I am, because you're doing the same thing, I just want to make sure you're doing it right. And that was my whole idea, and I think you probably caught on to that now, and I wish you success, and, but I just, that was my whole goal, is you do it right, understand it? And last but not least, I was happy to tell you, you to tell me that, that was, people thought I was the bad guys, for some reason, and I didn't want to know who they were. I told you, don't tell me who they are, that said that about me. I didn't want to care, don't care, but that's the only thing, because I know who I am, what I'm able to do for the community, and your heart was on the right side, and I appreciate it, okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, come on. Anyone else? Any resident or taxpayer? Thank you so much.
Much.
Another resident? Like address city council, in a matter, oh, she's going to say, oh, she's, oh, with you. Okay.
Good night.
Good night. Good night. Any resident or taxpayer, like address city council, in a matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Once again, any resident or taxpayer, like address city council, in a matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. See you, ma'am. Close your portion of the evening.
Thank you all very much, good night.
You're a happy night. You've been...
Thank you so much.
Okay, are these the children?
Those are my grandchildren, this is...
Grandchildren, you ain't got no grandchildren, come on.
This is a very important night for me.
You're too young.
And I wanted them here.
Okay.
So people will say yes.
Yes.
Thank you, you too, good night.
Nice seeing all of you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Go ahead, check this. Those are all great kids.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, letter dated June 14, 2013, from the business administrator.
Wait, wait, listen. Can you guys hear?
I can hear, yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Letter dated June 14, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding contracts through the New Jersey Sustainable Energy Joint Meeting to Constellation New Energy, New York, New York, for the fixed price multi-tariff at a rate of .092050 per kilowatt hour, and to NRG Energy, Princeton, New Jersey, for the street lighting accounts at a rate of .51240 per kilowatt hour, for the period of the June 2013 meter read date through the June 25, 2015 meter read date. No awards have been made for electricity supply for the general lighting power accounts, because the bidders are unable to beat the utility tariff rates.
Any question?
I do.
Yes, Councilman Grover?
Can we find out what cost savings we're going to make or have on these two? I already have that written down, I have that for budget purposes.
Tony, you have it?
I have it written down.
Okay.
But can you give me your answer?
Yes.
I do write things down, but you never give me the answer.
He is, you know, sometimes, sometimes, not all the time.
Anything else, can we, just call, say?
That's all I wanted.
That's it, okay, all right. Tony, you see that, you get that?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Put energy. Put it on.
Letter dated June 14, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Wireless Communications and Electronics, West Berlin, New Jersey, for the purchase of three Panasonic tough book computers for the fire department, at a total cost of $18,724.08.
Any question? Where are?
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Somerset, New Jersey, for the purchase of 37 25-foot deco poles with attachments for the midtown infrastructure improvement combined sewer overflow abatement project in the amount of $345,297.58.
Some questions?
Listen, can we get more detail? We just spent so much money not too long ago, were those the lights that actually wasn't working for a period of time, any?
Tony, you have any ideas?
I need to...
The only thing I have is a letter. Does it say where these are? Oh, it's going to be in Midtown.
Yeah, but we already spent money, not too long ago.
We just moved, we just moved money from one, from phase four, the streets gave to pay for letting, and I think it ended up, it was like $7,000 a piece. Is this the same lights, or is this new lights?
They're going to be different lights, they are in existence right now.
We're buying 37 new ones.
Right.
Where are they going?
Jefferson Avenue, East Jersey, West Grand, by the police station, those lights are always off and on.
Is that what this is for?
I know for the fact, but...
Is that where they're going?
Find out, give us the answer, because we discussed it at the SID district.
Yeah, I want Tony to find out.
Please, yeah.
It should be in the letter. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Tony.
That's it? The phone has a location?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, all right. Get that to Tony.
The last ones were down by the arch.
That's correct. Okay, put it on. But just get the information, Tony.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the business administrator. Requesting authorization for the proper city officials to submit, sign, and accept a local government capacity grant issued by the North Jersey Sustainable Communities Consortium and Together North Jersey in an amount not to exceed $110,000.
Any question? Where are? Yeah? Oh, no. Wait, I get one for you. Go ahead.
Oh, just one right there.
Again.
Okay.
Don't go.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the business administrator. Requesting that your honorable body consider the adoption of a resolution, Sustainable Jersey Silver Certification Renewal, establishing a Green Team Advisory Committee, which shall also serve as an energy advisory board, consisting of nine members who shall be residents or employees of City of Elizabeth, appointed annually, but whose initial term of appointment shall be through to December 31, 2014, will advise the municipal administration and city council on ways to improve municipal operations with green initiatives.
Mr. President.
Hi.
Hi. I think this should be a residence of Elizabeth, not employee of Elizabeth. We might live in Scotch plain, but you work in Elizabeth, your heart is in Scotch plain. If you live in Elizabeth and you work in Elizabeth, your heart is in Elizabeth. I'm sorry.
So what you're saying, if they, if they employ, but they should be resident of Elizabeth? That what you're saying?
Absolutely, because after 15 years, remember.
That what you're saying?
Otherwise, I like to move out of Elizabeth too, like the rest of the people. After 15 years, I work in the city. Doesn't make sense.
I'm not leaving Elizabeth.
Thank you. No, I don't want to move.
The other thing is, Tony, who's making the appointment?
The councilman.
The?
The city council. Right there. What does she read? That city council of the City of Elizabeth.
Okay.
Just like any other commissioners, appointed and confirmed.
All right, so Tony, we need to get that back to us. Hopefully get that back to us before next Tuesday. Yeah, next Tuesday. Otherwise, I'm willing to know that I'm probably gonna hold it up because I want to make sure that we, and I'm concerned with councilman.
Mr. President, you gotta be number one again, the City of Elizabeth. We have the green club of the United States of America. Don't forget, we won the prize.
That the, that all of them to be resident, if the employees for the city, okay?
Right.
I just want that modified.
Right.
Okay? Thank you. All right, put it over. Understand that if you don't get that back to us, we're gonna hold it up.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the business administrator. Requesting that your honorable body consider the adoption of a resolution, Sustainable Jersey Silver Certification Renewal, which re-adopts the companion animal management pledge.
Any question?
Put it on.
Put it on.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the business administrator. Requesting that your honorable body consider the adoption of a resolution, Sustainable Jersey Silver Certification Renewal, which consists of a sustainable land use pledge.
Any question?
That's super.
Put it on.
Come on, yeah.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the business administrator. Requesting that your honorable body consider the adoption of a resolution, Sustainable Jersey Silver Certification Renewal, which consists of a pledge in support of New Jersey's Wildlife Action Plan.
Any question? Where are?
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the business administrator. Requesting that your honorable body consider the adoption of ordinance authorizing the mayor and proper city officials to execute a contract to purchase the property known as the Freedom Club Polish National Home, located at 625 Pulaski Street, for a price of $750,000, which is contingent upon the city obtaining financing for the project and less any credits for environmental remediation that may be necessary when Phase One is completed.
All right, any question?
Yeah, do we know what we're gonna do here?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. President. I'm happy to see that this is moving along, and it's moving along better than what I thought it might have, so. But yeah, I'm looking to hopefully create some additional recreational opportunities for our youth at that site.
And we have a soccer field councilman?
There'll be a soccer field, obviously.
Mr. President, I'd like to commend Councilman Gonzalez. I know that for New Jersey, he's been talking about additional recreational facilities for children's work, so I'm happy to support this resolution.
Good job, councilman.
Thank you.
When it brought it to my attention, I let you know that I was full play with the support of this home.
I picked the right economy to buy property to.
The old, the old Polish home had been there established so long, but we need more recreation here. Councilman Gonzalez had been spearheading that area there for quite a while, so.
President, can we send a copy to former councilman Alon J.D. Jackus because he was one of the promoters of this?
Well, we'll bring him back for, put it on.
Yeah.
Put it on.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the business administrator. On behalf of Ms. Michelle Nelson, the proprietor of House of Walker Publishing, LLC, Elizabeth, requesting an approach permit or other applicable permission for a solar-powered phone charging kiosk to be located at the southeast corner of Broadneath, Jersey Street.
Any question?
Are we gonna put this on?
I think we've gotta wait till. We gotta hold this till. Well, because we're talking about accidents. When we discuss this somewhere, that's gonna take a little time. About putting, making the order of the resolution, as we discuss those two options. Councilman?
No, 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 this was just a request.
This is a request, yeah. And there's something that each councilperson asked, councillor, councillor, Councilman Grover. Councilman Grover asked about, you know, how we had the old telephone booth on the side of our, in our area, and then we had no control to get rid of. We might put something together, make sure that we have some leverage to, if they don't come back and do anything, we can get rid of that type of thing. There's a lot of stuff that we discussed. I'm pretty sure that much of George go back and put the thing together that we requested. And she agreed to it, she agreed to it.
Uh-huh, we had this.
Well, don't forget.
We just got.
It was a whole year ago.
It was brought to us last year, and we sent it to the law department, other department, to review it. To review it, and once they reviewed it, now it's back before us now. And I think we're almost there. If we just give George, the law department, gives a chance to kind of go through the thing that we requested, I think we can move forward on it. Okay?
Okay. What was that, was that what we requested?
It was, like I said, Councilman Grover mentioned it back about the old phone booth that we have in the city, and then we're trying to get rid of them, and no one knew who owned them, and we had no jurisdictional.
Yes, we did.
There's still, there's still phone booths out on the side. Phone booths out on the sidewalks, we don't know what to do with them.
Yeah.
I'll give you a list if you want.
Yeah, it was tough to get rid of.
But I, my point is, and I'll reiterate it because you weren't here, but.
I appreciate it.
The thing is, if we're gonna start something new, which is great innovative, brand-new stuff, let's get our ducks in order, have our laws put in place so that we can regulate this stuff. Because what's, what happens if tomorrow another company comes in and wants to do the same thing? At least everybody will have one rule of what to do, what they're supposed to do, and if they don't move it when we tell them to move it, then we have the authority to move it ourselves. And that's the kind of stuff that we didn't have with these phone booths.
Did you talk to the lady about that?
She was here. Yeah, she was, no, she.
She's all fine.
She was okay, she was okay. Whatever the guys asked her.
She says she'll agree to it.
Next question.
I'm a little unclear. I thought, I thought the task that you'd asked me to do is to determine whether this should be done by ordinance or by a contract.
No.
So you want, you want an ordinance drafted?
Can I restate, Mr. President? Yeah. With regard to what we'd like you to do, it is to, as an initial piece, look at Mr. Loomis's list of concerns, ordinance by ordinance, and advise us as to how we should proceed with regard to this application.
Yeah, but ultimately, that's, yeah, that's a, that's a policy question, not a legal.
Well, for example, for example, if, does the owner of the property that the guest is going in front, do they have any input into that?
I mean, that's, that's a legal question of research, but it's ultimately moot because the property owner, that's, it'll be in front of, already said that they want it.
That one? That one property?
What about other people?
What about the future?
There's two.
My point is, you gotta regulate this so that.
And that's why I asked clarification.
I think an ordinance is, the answer to your question, I think an ordinance is.
I go, so it's an order.
So, okay, so we can, we can draft an ordinance, but I just wanted to.
Can you draft an ordinance, and then whatever's missing, and then we can send it back?
Of course.
Okay.
I was just, I was unclear on the question.
And I, and I said to you, you could take the phone booth ordinance that we created post trying to get rid of these phones, and there's a lot of language in there on what the city can and can't do, and use that as a co-essential.
That's my statement.
Thanks, George.
All right, okay. Thanks. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll draft the ordinance.
Just hold that up until we get something.
Until we get the ordinance back, so. I don't think he'll get the ordinance done between now and next Tuesday.
No.
Uh, it's possible.
Yeah, what would you say now?
Well, here's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's.
We're still gonna have time to review it. So it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be ready by the time we get back and review it.
That's right. It won't be in final form because I'd like you guys to review it before it goes on.
But can you get it to us as soon as possible?
Oh, of course, of course.
It's gonna be held, it's gonna be held till he get the ordinance back, till we can review it, then we'll file.
And then you'll put it on the July 2 meeting, so you can mail it to us.
Move on.
Letter dated June 6, 2013, from the city attorney. Requesting that your honorable body consider an ordinance amending Chapter 17.52 of Code of City of Elizabeth entitled Fee, specifically to run Section 1752.40. The fee for a list of property owners to be notified of a public hearing shall be $12 to conform to state statute.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the chief financial officer. Advising that transfers for the 2013 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the chief financial officer. Requested the sewer utility operating fund appropriation capital outlay unexpended balance for the 2013 state fiscal year in the amount of $1 million, which is no longer needed. We cancel and credit it to surplus.
I got a question.
Yes.
Now you're really through this. Tony, you just came up to us last week or two weeks ago and told us we didn't have enough money. Why are we throwing a million dollars into surplus?
We're throwing it in there because to avoid a deficit for this year. The expenses are being appropriated against the bond ordinance rather than the line item in the budget, which is capital toll repairs.
But you told us we're gonna be.
Yes, we are.
So is this mean?
We're gonna be, we would have been in a deficit position this year. It's borderline, we're still waiting for the revenues to come in. We don't have those.
You can't be in a deficit position if you have a million-dollar surplus.
Excuse me? When you say this year, you mean 2012, 2013? As the end of 2013?
At the end of this year.
Right.
It's, it's close. So we're gonna try and cancel this so we don't incur a deficit on our books. If you incur a deficit on our books, we have to make it up next year twice. Come up with the, whatever the deficit is, plus a sewer rate increase. Now, the charges, there's a line item in a budget that's called capital repairs, okay? And some of those items are really capital, capital projects that belong in a ordinance which is bonded and spent over an appropriate over 20-year period. So, you know, that is the.
So I go back to my original question.
Yeah.
If in fiscal year 2013.
The end of this year.
We're on the verge of not having enough money to fix this, or at least budget enough. How do we have a million dollars extra to go put it into surplus and not apply that to those outstanding repairs that need to be paid for?
That's gonna avert the deficit. In other words, this $1 million is just gonna reduce our expenses for the year. It's gonna reduce our expenses for the year. We budgeted like $1,700,000, okay? I'm offsetting and canceling that dollar amount.
All right, so instead, okay, I'm sorry. Let me, let me try to understand. So we, we originally had $1,700,000 as our surplus?
No, no, no. The million, $1,700,000 was an appropriation for capital repairs on a line item, on a budget line item. What we're doing is just canceling that appropriation, that expenditure in the budget, and this will wind up in the surplus account to avoid a deficit. It's an appropriation. It's not a surplus, that $1,700,000. $1,700,000 is an appropriation, and we're canceling $1 million worth of. We've done this in the past many, many years.
It's gonna reduce to a million, not down to 700,000.
No, that $1 million is gonna be transferred into surplus.
Surplus, okay. Will we then be able to use that surplus in fiscal year 2014?
Yeah.
How much money is in surplus now?
Right now, I think, there might be about three or four, three or four million. But we don't know what the revenue's gonna be for June. We're down about, it looks like $1 million to $2 million. It's really close.
Can we use that surplus in fiscal year 2014?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can use it.
So.
But that, yes.
So we can avoid, why do we have this tech, why do we have to raise the rate then?
Well, because it's still gonna be on up. I just went out and borrowed the $12 million for capital expenditures. Tomorrow, I'm going for another $12 million for a note, which will later, next year, be bonded. We're spending a lot of money in sewer construction, sewer repairs. It's necessary to have that bonding and increase the rates to avoid a deficit going forward. And that's, and I have to bring it up also about the lawsuit. About that sewer rate increase, we might have to table it until July 23rd. I wanted to bring that up later on, I didn't bring it up now, because.
Right, but that's not, you ain't gonna answer my question.
Yeah.
You've asked us to vote on a rate increase.
Yes.
Because we're $3.6 million short based on these customers that didn't pay. That's what we did last week, right? All right.
Right.
Okay. So if we have a $4 million surplus.
No, wait, what'd you hit the $3.6 million second? That was for the Board, Board of Education.
It was the amount that was less.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was just the forecast for next year, 2014.
We have $4 million surplus. Why do we have to raise the rate?
Well, because it's all gonna be eaten up in appropriations and that service for next year.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilman Keenan?
I think that, to help me understand.
Yeah.
I think, I'm having a problem with the word surplus. You're designating this million dollars as surplus when in fact you're anticipating 2014 operating expenditures. It's not a true surplus, correct?
This is gonna be transferred to surplus.
For this year.
We're canceling appropriations.
This is just a housekeeping measure, but that, in fact, that million dollars is marked for 2014 operating expenditures.
Yes, it will be.
Okay, that clears it up for me. What was thrown at me was the word surplus. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, we okay?
I'm not okay, but I'll, I'll raise it again later on.
Well, I kind of got concerned also, but I guess a good question about, you know, for sure.
Man, I just think that if we're asking the taxpayers to pay more in sewer.
Correct.
But we have a surplus.
That's my, my.
Then why are we raising the rate?
That's my, my biggest.
You have a surplus, excuse me, you have a surplus that's going into next year to balance the budget. You have a million dollars that's going to help balance the budget. So with this surplus going into next year, plus a sewer rate increase, that will balance the budget for 2014 fiscal year.
Right, but we've been carrying a $3 million surplus this year. You just told me we have, we have $4 million in the surplus.
Yeah, when you say carrying, that's still gonna be eaten up by the appropriations for 2014. You have to have a balanced budget, cash.
So we won't have a surplus at the end of 2014?
No, we have to. We should have. We're gonna have a surplus in 2014. We need a surplus, just like you do in municipality, for eventual catastrophes or over expenditures and that type of thing. You always have a surplus at the end of the year.
I just think that if we're carrying such a large surplus, we could avoid a rate increase.
You always have to have a surplus.
That's my good side also. Yeah, Councilman?
Yeah. Just to clarify my memory, the appropriation of $1,716,000, $13,000 was only an appropriation. You actually didn't have that money inside the budget.
No, it wasn't a budget. It was a budget for 2013. Now we're canceling $1 million.
They didn't spend it, okay.
They didn't spend it, and we need that money for surplus to avoid a deficit for 2013.
Right.
And that'll be used.
And plus we're having a rate increase of that portion of those $20 million that was originally.
To balance the budget for 2014 at this point.
So you'd be able to the Board of Education, 3.5, the city is 3.0. You have the same amount of percentage of the Board of Ed in the county.
What's that?
No, we're talking about the sewer.
This is the sewer.
For tax increase. 2.0, just for the sewer.
2.0 for the whole budget?
No, wait, we're good. We're talking about the sewer. We're talking about the sewer.
No, I understand. He's asking, he's asking, what is our tax increase in the City of Elizabeth? And I'm telling you that in the City of Elizabeth, our budget is only going up two percent. That's all we're allowed to do.
We're under the cap.
We're under the cap.
The cap here.
They're going up seven and a half.
Yeah, but they're going up seven and a half because of, there is an increment of twelve thousand new students, population of Elizabeth. Yeah, it is. That's the truth. And you have to allocate the money.
And you tighten your belt and you stop spending.
And just like we give it to our police and our fire department.
I understand it. But we've been able to do it without laying anybody off, okay? And the Board of Ed has not been able to do that. All they keep doing is spending more money.
And there's increments of students, and then there's increments of family that we're able to service within the two percent cap.
I disagree with you, Councilor.
I got a lot, Councilman Gonzalez.
I would just say that they are also subject to the two percent cap, like we are. The only thing they're allowed to get away with it is superintendent approves the budget, and hopefully that the letters go out...
Yes.
That we requested.
We still haven't received any documentation from the Department of Education yet.
Yeah, he did a bit of analysis. No, Tony, did you send the letter out?
I don't sure if you have to wear.
Well, about the resolution, we did a...
Yeah, yeah, they would say, yeah.
Did we get copies of something?
Just to...
I don't know. The way you... I just wanted to say, this point was... This is in government. I have the floor.
All right, you want it, Councilman Gonzalez?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, I understand what you're saying about how we allocated one point seven million. We're only going to take a million then and carry it over to the surplus next year. I just still think it's, it's a shame that we couldn't use that million to offset, offset the sewer rate increase as opposed to the budget, so that this way we could meet the other expenses, appropriations, or what have you. Instead...
The expenses for next year are going up dramatically. Joint meeting, we've got debt service, as I just mentioned, I just went out and borrowed the bond money for twelve million dollars. I'm going tomorrow for another twelve million dollars. These are all capital expenditures for sewer repairs and construction. You know, that has to be covered, so these are all expenses, and you have to have some surplus balanced into the next year, you know, just in case, just like we have in municipality. And just hopefully that we have the revenue collections next year, and we have a settlement with the sewer lawsuit.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, move on. Let's move.
Okay, letter dated June 18, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that sewer utility operating fund appropriation, capital outlay, unexpended balance for the 2013 state fiscal year in the amount of one million dollars, which is no longer needed. Oh, that's the one just...
You want to go back?
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider the cancellation of sewer utility capital ordinances no longer deemed required.
Okay. I think so. Move on.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2013 Appropriations Act, requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the City Treasurer to cancel certain operating checks issued by the City of Elizabeth as set forth in the attached schedule in the amount of twenty-three thousand, sixty-five dollars, fifty-six cents, and be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated. Stale dated checks canceled.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the City Treasurer to cancel workers' compensation checks in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred, thirteen dollars, fifty-seven cents, and general liability checks in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred, fifty-nine dollars, seventeen cents, as set forth in the attached schedule totaling fifteen thousand, four hundred, seventy-two dollars, seventy-four cents, and be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated. Stale dated checks canceled.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the City Treasurer to cancel certain tax refund checks issued by the City of Elizabeth as set forth in the attached schedule in the amount of one hundred, twenty-four thousand, three hundred, thirty-seven dollars, ninety-one cents, and be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated. Stale dated checks canceled.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the City Treasurer to cancel certain trust checks issued by the City of Elizabeth as set forth in the attached schedule in the amount of one thousand, five hundred, ninety-two dollars, twenty-six cents, and be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated. Stale dated checks canceled.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services. Office on Youth requests permission to enter into an agreement with King University to conduct a youth appreciation dinner, recognizing the hard work and accomplishments during the 2012-2013 school year.
I got a question.
Great, Councilor.
President, what youth are we honoring?
Tony, you got it? My appreciation.
You know, they're going to pick the top ten percent of the school, or are we picking the football team, or who?
Who are we picking?
Thirteen thousand could only go so far.
Football teams.
We don't have, we haven't anything in that, Tony, at all?
Yeah, no, we'll find out. I don't have any list there.
Okay, all right. All right, Councilor, try to get it for you.
Sure.
Letter dated June 7, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization from proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary to provide a rental housing program deferred payment loan on the property located at 233 Florida Street for new construction of four assisted units in a twelve-unit project in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 10, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to prepare and submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated plan for CD 39 fiscal year 2013 to include applications for funding for community development block grant, two million, seventy-six thousand, four hundred, ninety-two dollars, emergency solutions grant, one hundred, thirty-six thousand, seventy-four dollars, and home program, six hundred, eighty-two thousand, four hundred, fifty-nine dollars, to provide affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities.
Questions?
Now, this thing keeps, this number keeps going down and down over here.
Clear. Clear.
Letter dated June 14, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to extend the lease agreement between the city and Salvation Army for the rental of space at 1018 East Grand Street to provide emergency shelter for the homeless to June 18, 2014, at the prescribed lease rate of one dollar per year.
Can I just ask a question? The young lady that came before us, was she feeding the homeless?
Yeah, I'm feeding church.
Can't she work with Salvation Army? Maybe they can do a big thing over there by the Salvation Army where she can feed the same people that are staying in the facility?
All right, don't know.
Just a minute.
Yeah, it's a question. Okay.
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to extend the contract between the City of Elizabeth and the Elizabeth Development Company Retail Skills Center to December 30, 2013.
Questions?
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community...
Who needs to spend more money? I mean, who needs more time to spend on money? Is it the retail skills center?
Retail skills.
What did they have? So many people on the floor, I just missed this. What does that mean? I'll find out. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to extend the contract between the City of Elizabeth and the Tri-County American Red Cross to December 30, 2013.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, recommending awarding a contract to Harvard Consultants, Cranford, New Jersey, to perform a redevelopment study of the University Boulevard corridor for the period June 26, 2013, to June 25, 2014, in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Any questions?
Is the county or the college, is the county or the university putting in some of the costs since, I mean...
Any cost this?
Because we're going to be highlighting the university. I'll find out.
The question is, is the university including money in this? Could you have it, Tony?
Uh, Mr. President?
I'll find out. It's like, because it'd be like when you highlight more than...
You have, see it, Tony? You see it? Paste that down.
Listen.
Can you find it?
Can you find it?
No, I'm listening. Look for the answers.
Harvard comes up this room. You got it? Yeah, now what was the question?
Is the county, is the college or the county contributing towards our...
The university.
To the university? Contributing the money towards? Okay. Find out. Okay, you'll find it. Okay.
Thank you.
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to T and M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide environmental engineering consulting services at the former Saxony Motel property located at 330, 338 Atlantic, Atlantic Street, at a cost not to exceed sixty thousand, three hundred dollars.
What are we doing with this? I thought we got, you know, Saxony.
Yeah, remediation goes on for...
I thought we got, you know, Saxony.
Remediation goes on for a long period of time, from my experience, but we held 442, 700, is that correct, Tony?
That's what I said, it's some of 442.
It's held in escrow.
Can that money, is that money...
I'm going to see where the, what the account that's coming out of. First, I'm seeing this.
All right, because my question is, are the T and M Associates being paid from this 442? It says sufficient funds provided ex account, it's on the signature.
Yeah. That's what money comes from. Can you find out?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm going to find out, yeah. I don't know where they have this.
You're sure?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor?
We, we did this before. All the environmental, all the environmental study was completed, everything was paid. I mean, we go back again.
Because wasn't there a lawsuit, or the money was...
Absolutely. Couple of years ago.
You have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that when you put in, when you do underground mediation, there's a constant checking, monitoring of wells.
I understand.
And there's expense for that.
It doesn't say that.
It says it right in there.
Professional engineering environmental services.
And the third paragraph says, the goal is to hold me close.
That's what it is.
The case is still open, NJDEP.
Yeah, that's what it is.
This will be accomplished with the use of soil injections, capping the commissioning the onsite monitoring wells and recording deed notices. So I think they have to do some, some finalization of whatever is there.
But did we set aside?
Well, that's, well, it says it's been held in escrow. That's covered. Yeah, Councilor Keane?
Right. The letter, the last line in the letter, a sufficient funds for this purpose will be provided in the count number X, et cetera.
Yeah.
If that is not, if that is not the escrow, my recommendation would be to see if we can use the escrow money as opposed to this account. Do you know off top what account this is?
Well, it's a capital account. It's probably for the, I think that we have a supplement for the Saxony also. I'll check the account. Oh, yeah, yes, it's an escrow. Been held probably with the Superior Court, I would think, so. It will find out.
Did you get the spec just before Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Letter dated June 17, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to T and M Associates to provide civil engineering services on a time and material basis for actual time and expenses in connection with traffic signal design and construction, inspection at the intersection of Elizabeth Avenue and Bridge Street, and the intersection of Elizabeth Avenue and Jefferson Avenue, at a cost not to exceed one hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars, plus reversible.
Questions?
What are we doing?
This is coming from this grant?
Did we use up all the grant money? It said the city has received a grant for this project in the amount of three hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Did you know we were reacting terms of the grant money? Tony?
Uh, no, but we'll find out. They have an account that was on, I got a count in the back, a capital ordinance. Is that a capital, a capital? Yeah, it's a capital account. Bond ordinance.
Tony, what are we doing? What kind of a... Relating?
Okay. Clear.
Okay, now we have, on their move. Letter dated June 13, 2013, from the City of Elizabeth Planning Board, requesting that your honorable body consider the adoption of an ordinance, proposing amendments to the model ordinance from the Environmental Protection Agency, and in reference of the new base flood elevations.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
You just wanted to the law department?
Uh, I believe it's to the planning board, but don't talk about the law department.
Oh, thanks, ma'am. I see.
Because, remember, we had, before, we sent it back to the planning board, and Victor Renaker, the planning board coordinator, he did extensive search, research on this.
Okay, I see, and I see it checked, and it said it checked there, that's the attorney.
And he brought it back to us from the planning board, and really it's all about elevation, since FEMA requested, I think, the flood condition, you know, from Sandy, and the elevation have changed. And I'm making this up, when you're building now, I'm making it look, because I don't, I can't do that number, but if it's nine feet, it might be up to eleven feet elevation, or twelve feet elevation, okay? So the elevation change, that's what this is all about.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, Councilor.
Mr. President, this is just a transcript of the ordinance. Do we need to create an ordinance now, or is there an ordinance actually that we can look at?
I believe we...
This is, yes, this is the first, the first I get, is to see we're not CC'd on it.
Yeah, I believe we do have an ordinance.
But can we need to send this to the law department?
I thought the law department did, look at it.
But they not CC'd.
They send us to city council for us.
I, Mr. President, I move that we send this to the law department. I don't think they got it.
You didn't get the...
You say he just got it right now. Same one, maybe.
All right, let me ask you this. We moved, you sent it to the law department to get it back to us by Tuesday, or you want...
I don't know if there's a rush on this.
Why are we rushing?
Well, like, like, see, we can't do this, so we can.
People want to rebuild their house, people want to rebuild their...
As soon as they get it done, they'll go back.
If they do the wrong thing, their flood tax will go up twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor.
We have the chairman here tonight, might be laborated.
No, no, no.
No, it's not fair?
No, we have to go to the law department.
What I'm saying, because he said...
No. If I'm going to go to the chairman.
I understand, I'm not stopping you to send it to the law department, the chairman is there.
He said no.
Okay, sorry.
It's fine, no problem. He's on target.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have to...
I put the law, the law department. I put it back to us.
Letter dated May 1, 2013, from GES Groundwater and Environmental Services, Neptune, New Jersey, requesting an encroachment permit to perform environmental work consisting of one groundwater monitoring well within the sidewalk on Denton Street across the street from 654 South Ford Street.
Any questions?
President, yeah, this isn't a second one, you can put this on, it's just the usual monitoring wall.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Kleinfelder, Hamilton, New Jersey, requesting an encroachment permit to perform environmental work consisting of two temporary monitoring points within the right of way along the west side of Elizabeth Avenue, in the sidewalk in front of the property located at 460 Elizabeth Avenue.
Any questions? Clear.
Letter dated June 10, 2013, from Tyree Environmental Corp., Mount Laurel, New Jersey, requesting an encroachment permit to perform environmental work consisting of one groundwater monitoring well within the right of way along the southern side of East Jersey Street in the sidewalk approximately ten feet to the west of Winfield Scott Plaza.
Questions? Clear.
Letter dated April 18, 2013, from Mr. Richard Reyes, Port Avenue, Elizabeth, requesting to be appointed as constable.
Mr. President, I think we should hold this in...
Is that yours?
That's a Councilman Torres's ward.
Can I have some check, man?
Hold up?
You have to check him.
Okay, that's it. Who's reg...
I'm going to reg...
But you got to hold, right? Keep that information, that's what you're telling me? You want to hold, you want to get more information?
Yes.
Okay.
Letter dated June 18, 2013, from City Treasurer, submitting the treasurer's report of receipts and disbursements for the month of March 2013, a statement of bank balances and investments as of March 31, 2013. I have a memorial for Angelo Mario Laffas Sr., the councilman in Maza. And then, we have to begin the process again for ordinance number 4387, to authorize the creation of a special improvement district in the city to promote tourism and to designate the Elizabeth Destination Marketing Organization as the management corporation.
Unfortunately, there was a revised section that most should have come down from the law department, was not incorporated in our last ordinance when we went in. So at this time, I believe it has been revised, but Councilman Gonzalez, you go ahead, give it forward to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Very simple. Unfortunately, what we voted on, by published, was not the same thing.
You can't do a friendly amendment?
No, because the abutting land orders need 10 days' notice. We have to send them a notice.
Did they get a notice in the first?
They did, but they got the previous version of the ordinance and not the one that was actually voted on.
Is that much of a fundamental difference that...
It's a material, it's a material enough difference that if someone challenged it, it could overturn to be safe.
It's very, it's very unfortunate.
Unfortunately.
There's nothing else that we could do at this point but to put it back on.
Yeah. Unfortunately, like I said, there's not nothing we can do, but I wrestle with it like everybody would. It should take us a long, we have the revised copy now, and those should...
So we're not gonna vote on it on next week?
No. Next week, no, first read.
Oh, good, first read.
First read, I'm sorry, first read, yes.
And we don't have enough time for...
We only have seven days, or ten days.
Gotta be advertised, all that stuff, so that's a problem. Okay. Okay. And also, just add to that, we've taken this long. You know, a few more days, I don't like it, most of it here, but we might as well make sure we put it right.
But this councilman, you know, put a lot of work in.
Yeah. Well, they all took a lot of time, so we want to make sure that, okay?
Okay. And I've given each of you another copy of ordinance number 4373, an ordinance amending in superseding City of Elizabeth Land Development Code, Chapter 17, Section 17.36.20, 17.36.30, 17.36.80, 17.36.90, 17.36.100, 17.36.120, 17...
Where did you get that from? I don't have that.
The ordinance.
It's the one that she gave out.
On the top.
You had it previously.
It was right on top.
I've given it to you again to review, re-review.
When we go once around, I'll...
Okay.
This is for the board people, right?
No, this was the planning board ordinance.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I just want to make an announcement.
Okay.
We have to schedule the special meeting for July 2nd to introduce the budget.
Temporary budget for 2014.
Temporary budget. So the time, July 2nd, which is a Tuesday, at 7:00 or 7:15?
Seven.
Seven.
Can we do 7?
Seven is fine.
Seven is good?
Seven.
Seven is good?
Yeah.
Seven? Okay, 7 o'clock it is.
And then, Mr. Zengara?
Yes, we have a request from the city attorney and myself. You know, the public hearing is scheduled for the sewer rate increase for next Tuesday, the 25th of June. We'd like to request that that be tabled until July 23rd.
No problem.
The reason being that the authorities involved in the sewer lawsuit have agreed to continuing mediation, and if there's no progress made within the month, then we'll recommend that sewer rate increase on the 23rd, but hopefully, the parties will come to their senses and then we'll have a, some type of...
So we'll table that, what we discussed?
Yes.
Okay. I'm glad to see that happen, Tony. I'm so happy to see that happen. Because that's one of my requests, that if we did not, and I spoke to the attorneys myself, that we gotta put pressure on these guys. You know, whatever it takes, whatever it takes, we take their profit from them, I don't, whatever it takes. We have, you know, and because it's a shame that we've been suing us, we're suing them, we can't get the money from them. And I'm gonna put the burden on our taxpayers, it's ridiculous. I'm just not for that. So I'm glad to see that you, maybe they'll be able to resolve this thing in the next month or two, hope, soon.
We'll have a good idea in the next couple, okay?
Very good. Thank you. That's good news, that's good news. Yeah.
I just pointed a clarification, and I'm sorry for bringing it up.
That's right.
In fact, on 4373, this was the ordinance, Mr. Castro had come before us to...
Yes, yes.
Okay. And why are we getting another copy, right?
No, we, remember I said to them when they came up and asked, I told them, I asked courtesy, I would ask us to review it again. I said, not saying that we would do anything about it.
Right.
But out of courtesy, we're gonna, now, since then, I have spoken to Victor, the law department, Victor Reneger.
Right.
And really, no one's done anything about that section, I mean, so, I just, out of courtesy, we just looked, reviewed it, that's all.
So at this point, we're gonna take this home and review it.
Right, right. That is correct.
We'll come back and discuss it.
That is correct. We're not doing anything.
I do think that his concern about that deletion of subsection Q, whatever that was, that if there's some review that needs to be done, in other words, the law department said they had no problem with the deletion of that, that subsection.
Hello?
Okay. So we just, out of courtesy, I told them that I would ask them to review it, and that's what we're doing.
Okay. I'll take a look, if you have any questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Once around? Councilman disappeared on me, so, Councilman Torres?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I just have two things. I would like the bus stop in front of Bombileo, which is Second and Elizabeth Avenue, moved to the opposite side. Basically, there's kids and women and children that take the bus, and I just don't think it's a good look standing in front of a bar. So, right across the street is a dry cleaner, so I would like that moved. And I would like that, simply put, speed bumps. In the little, in the little section on Bond Street, between First and Second, no, certain, Bond, between First and Second. I know a couple of years ago, there was an incident where a child was, has deceased. So there's a lot of issues there with the car speeds. So we're going to, we could put some type of strips or a speed bump there, just to...
Now, you mentioned speed bump. Do you want the Roma strip, you know those strips? Do you think that might help?
Can we start with that?
We haven't already.
Are they there? They're there now?
They probably have been worn off, and they need to be redone.
But, the main thing is that it'll be figured out, we need to redo it.
Yeah, okay.
So you want to start with that first?
The reason why I say that we're there already is because normally you would ask the residents to sign a petition requesting that, but since they were already there and that process went through, what you gotta do is redo.
Establish it, right. Go ahead, Councilman.
That's it, thank you.
That's it? Over back up to Councilman, go ahead, because you was, you got, once around, you got anything?
Yeah, go ahead. I have, I gotta get my mind together.
I gotta get your mind together. Councilman Keane?
Thank you. I got an email today from a woman who's got a complaint about three pit holes. She mentions the addresses being, it's either 59 Cherry or Orchard. I'm not sure whether that's in Carlos's Ward or in...
I'm saying one ward.
Which one?
59 Cherry or 59 Orchard. She wasn't sure which street it was.
I think it's in my ward.
Okay. Can I, can I email you the...
No problem.
Because this email then should have been directed to you. Thank you very much, Councilman. That's all.
That's it? Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to explain to, just so the Councilman Torres understands, whenever we have requests for speed bumps, what you need to do is you need to get the owners or residents of the properties where you want to put the speed bumps, to sign the letter requesting, because we had a situation years ago where we put them in, and then those people weren't in favor of it, they were making, the cars would make noise, and then they wanted the city to go back and remove them. And the reason why I said that we have them there already is because we went through that process, so you don't have to do that again. Just have John go and reestablish what's been already agreed to by the residents, okay? That's the only reason why I raised that. Mr. President, one thing I would ask, maybe Alana, if you could send me a letter to Director Cosgrove. I don't think they have one, a written procedure.
Okay.
But I'd like to know what is their common procedure when establishments that are legal licensed establishments hire police officers? What are they supposed, what's the procedure? Are they just gonna sit in a car? Are they supposed to be outside of the establishment at dismissal time?
Okay.
And then, the other suggestion, the second part is a suggestion, that whatever the establishments are getting in terms of pay jobs, that they maybe want to bump it up, if they're having trouble, especially now we're going through the summer months. It's gonna get nuts at 2:30 in the morning. We've had a couple shootings in front of some of these places, we've had fights in front of these places, and it's obvious that if an establishment has two cops, that may not be enough, if you have three hundred people coming out of a night well at 2:30 in the morning. And I think that should definitely be a patrol car, should definitely have lights flashing at time of dismissal, so people know that they're there. Maybe even come out of the car, just kind of stand there and show some sort of respect so that people don't act up and go crazy. But, you know, I just think we need to get some sort of a procedure in place, so that at least it's uniform, all the officers that take these pay jobs know what they have to do, and there's no question. Mr. President, on this ordinance, one of the things that I think sometimes we have a problem with, under City Council, is that we get these ordinances from the planning board, or from the law department, amending ordinances from, you know, the 1960s, and we don't get like a little idea of what exactly is the old and what's the new. And we rely on our legal counsel and our experts to tell us that this is a good thing or not. Obviously, based on the planning board vice chairman, zoning board vice chairman's comments the other day, this section Q deletion, in his opinion, was clearly a detriment to his board. My suggestion, I mean, we're not experts, you and I, you know, I mean, I have zoning and whatnot, but most of council does not. I think what should be done, and maybe our law department can intervene on this, is to have the planning board attorney and the zoning board attorney come together and look at these changes, and give us an opinion, because they work for those respective boards, and if the planning board attorney is telling the planning board to adopt this ordinance, and yet the zoning board is not happy with, well, then the zoning board attorney should intervene. They're from the same law office. And maybe they could have a meeting with their respective chairmans from the two boards, and their attorneys from the two boards, and then recommend to us, if paragraph Q is to not be repealed, then maybe they could amend it to so that both boards are happy. I don't know, but I just don't want to see two boards fighting against each other when they have council of their own that can sit down and negotiate or discuss. I mean, I just think that, you know, we don't, we have the planning board recommending something, but we never got any feedback from the zoning. And it seems like what we did by repealing this section, that we basically took power away from the zoning.
Okay. Can you take that?
I have one question for Tony. Tony, this $24 million bond that we're doing, 12 million, 12 million cents, could we get a list of where we're spending this $24 million? Bond ordinances usually tell us where this money is going to be spent, what projects...
These are for major repairs that are coming down the road. We just spent $12 million last year on different projects throughout the city. I mean, it's not like one big project like Morona.
Can we get a list?
Or something. Yeah, sure, we do, the list of the actual expenditures.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, $12 million is a lot of money. So, we should know where, when. If we just get a list, and if we're gonna bond another 12 million, can we at least get an idea of where they're gonna spend it?
That would be difficult, because these are sewer collapses that happened throughout the city during the year. We just have...
Unexpected, unexpected nature repairs.
Yeah, it's not like, again, Verona, or Summer Street, or Third Avenue, that type of thing. These are...
Which were expanded, yeah.
Yeah, these are just, they're not flooding problems, they're just sewer repairs and collapses.
Can we get a list of where we spent $12 million?
Thank you. Nothing for you, Mr. President. Can I ask, Councilman? Councilman, you got something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, just to piggyback off of, just to piggyback off of, just to piggyback off of Councilman Torres regarding the ordinances. I know in the past, we have asked, when they're going to be upgrades or changing an ordinance, to send us the old portion that is being, you know, replaced. So can we just make sure, you know, that we continue in that? That way, we know what the councilmen said, what was there, and what we're trying to do.
Of course.
You know, with the new piece of legislation. And regarding the bonding issue, normally you would send us, let us know what the money was going to be used for. That has been your practice in the past.
Yeah, we've had the bond ordinances, they've already been approved by City Council.
Right. But normally you would say what the cap, you know, what the project was, or...
Oh, yeah, well, these are just repairs. These were system upgrades, and we passed, the council passed two bond ordinances within the last two or three years. And now, it's time to fund and finance the projects.
So basically, we replenished, reused up all that bond money, so we need to have some more in reserve.
Yeah, yeah. It's been approved already by the City Council, and it's just the expenditures and the financing that's paid. It's unfortunate, but we have a 100-year-old system that spent a lot of money.
It's 120 years old.
120.
Yeah, it was 100 when we started.
Yeah, I was saying it was 100 since I came on, so.
Yolanda, I'm gonna ask if you would send a letter to both the plan board chair and also the zoning chair, requesting that if there is any, on any ordinance that they have requested or making changes, please prepare and send the ordinance to us for the amendment or changes to be made. Okay?
Okay.
Mr. President? Wait a minute, I gotta go around, it's once around, I gotta go around. Councilman, wait, Councilman Keane, you have, I mean, Councilman Mazel...
We're trying to do something to Councilman Torres.
Oh, you want to address him?
Yeah, just something, Councilman Torres. With respect to the ordinance, even though the city planner or his staff, they sit on both of those boards, I think the recommendation by the councilman, that the two chairs at least, or somebody from both of those respective boards, they get together whenever they're gonna make recommendations, to make changes to the ordinance. What I did want to say is, I don't believe that the two gentlemen that were here that evening, even though they are members of the zoning board, were here representing the zoning board, I think they were here representing themselves.
Well, I didn't want to say that, but...
Well, I understand that. I understand that, but I just want to make sure that, that the board in general...
Right.
Is comfortable with whatever the ordinance modification.
I understand.
And as long as I'm, I get a letter from the chairman of the zoning board, or the attorney for the zoning board saying they reviewed it, and they're happy with it, I'm comfortable. I'm not, you know...
That's why I'm gonna send a letter to both chairs, to the planning board and the zoning, requesting that...
Because we didn't get anything from the zoning board chairman or his attorney, or their attorney saying yes or no to this.
I understand. Okay, we're gonna request that now, put it right to the...
That's why I was saying, I think it's a good recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Keane, I'll come back to you in a minute, just gotta go to Councilman Mazel.
Mr. President, on a subject of the same subject, I sat on the Board of Adjustments for many years, and I don't think it's fair that we receive after Arbor Consulting and the planning board worked on amending, an amending, something that belonged to the Board of Adjustment. It's completely uncalled for. Matter of fact, we had this thing back and forth for about, might be six years, and then finally, all of a sudden, we're rushing right through, and then, I personally, I didn't get a chance to read, matter of fact, but when I, when I find out that I was reading, I picked it up immediately, and I called the city clerk. Okay? And then at the meeting, I wasn't there because we had the Top 50 Excellence Awards Dinner, so I had to be with the school and with the kids, because I'm in charge of activity, and I wasn't there, I don't know who board members came over here, but it's definitely not fair that this, this particular Board of Adjustment, has been working under the guidelines and the restrictions that existed within our law, to all of a sudden, pinpoint restriction that existed within our law, to all of a sudden pinpoint one area and take it away from A and give it to B, is definitely uncalled for. That power should remain with the Board of Adjustment, that has been for years and has been working excellently. And I'm sure also the planning board, they'll be doing a great job. Why even do that, creating some kind of a, an amazade between A, B, and C? So personally, I could see that is the right thing to do, to eliminate, delete that, and whatever you call them, what was the section, A?
Q.
Section Q.
Section Q.
And I think everybody should be happy.